Hosted over here, right behind the board there, you will see the actual open meeting act. We would ask if you would stand with us, join us for, with us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Pyle.
Here.
All right, and under action, I'm going to ask for approval of the consent agenda after removing item 13 to be moved to the regular agenda. If I can have a motion.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda taking item 13 to be moved to the actual full agenda. If you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and then as well, approval of the full agenda with item 13 to be a part of that regular agenda, full agenda.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda with item 13 in addition. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. And while we're at, uh, let's see, well, we have presentation of the Norfolk Fire Division, the 2012-13 Annual Report.
Mayor and council, allow that to circulate its way through there. I just want to touch on a few things contained in that document.
Up and on.
Green lights on? We're good to go, I believe. I promised the mayor earlier, or actually last week, that I would be brief, and I'm going to endeavor to do that, so I will try to hit on a few points, and as always, I'll answer any questions you might have either this evening or at any time. This reflects the fiscal year ending September 30th, so this is a fiscal year report that would have ended this past September 30th from 2012 through 13, so that 12-month period. Most importantly, as I shared with you a year ago, is that the beginning point of this report always begins with no injury, serious injury or death to any of the members of the Fire Division. That's first and foremost my responsibility to assure occurs, and if possible, it would be my goal to give you that same report every year at this time, and we're blessed to make that happen again this year, and God's blessings on that note. So, most importantly, that's first and foremost for us at the Fire Division. In regard to significant purchases in the past year, we took delivery and placed into service two new structural firefighting pieces of equipment purchased with funds generated by the Rural Fire Protection District. Both of those pieces of apparatus are functioning excellent for us and are going to serve us for many, many years to come. Additionally, on December 27th of this month, we'll do a bid opening for the replacement of a city pumper that will be put into service and housed in Station 1, and ultimately, this body will be able to hear and hopefully approve the appropriate bid awarded for that particular fire truck replacement that will replace approximately 25-year-old vintage truck that will be taken, will be put in a reserve capacity at that time. Currently, the Fire Division is fully staffed in all its full-time slots. We addition to that have 29 reserve firefighters that buttress and support our full-time staff, outstanding group of young men and women, critical to our success, and we appreciate each of them for the commitment that they give to the division annually. Statistically, wanted to share just a couple positive things from the Prevention Bureau. Saw some upward trends in some of the permit totals and construction dollars spent. Those are positive signs and hopefully a reflection of the efforts of the Prevention Bureau and a positive construction climate in the community. I hope that that endeavors to continue, so that was a positive note I noticed in the statistical data. Region 11, for those of you that know, was housed in the Fire Division, that three-county region that functions under the umbrella of the Fire Division operations, was fortunate not to have any major natural disasters this past year. They kept themselves busy doing pre-planning exercises in that preparedness posture so that should the bad event occur, they're ready to go. So there were several significant events over the course of the past 12 months that would hopefully prepare them better to serve should that event occur. I will also note that Wayne County is not part of our terracotta, but we did send significant resources from the city of Norfolk to assist Wayne in that, in their unfortunate event over there with that tornado, and so both our hazmat response team and many of our fire suppression EMS staff responded to help Wayne out in their endeavor. Calls for service is always kind of to the forefront of, you know, what happened in the past year on the operation side. We had just slightly under a 2% increase over the previous year, 2,264 calls for service, and as in keeping with many, many years, that the ratio of total calls EMS compared to fires are right at 85%. So 85% of that 2,264 calls were medically related calls for service. In this document, you'll find all kinds of graphs and charts and statistics that kind of offer a story. More importantly than all of that are just two key things I want to share with you. Takes two things for me to tell you and look you in the eye and tell you that the Fire Department's operating at its best potential. Takes outstanding staff, and we have that. There are outstanding people dedicated to doing all the right things, doing the best of their ability to serve the citizens of Norfolk, and I'm proud of in each and every one of them. So that part of it speaks for itself. The second part of that equation is all of you, because all of those worker bees, all those doers, hard-charged folks that will do everything they can to be successful, cannot do their job without the support of this body. If we did not have the support of administration and the elected officials providing us the resources to do the job that we're being called on to do, we would never reach the goals and objectives of the Fire Division, period. So you are part of that equation. I'm pleased when I get a report to my counterparts across the state, to the citizens' service groups that I'm talking to. Both parts of that equation come together strong in Norfolk, and I'm proud to be a part of that. It makes it very, very easy to function at a high level when you have those two things working together. So publicly, I want to thank the staff of the Fire Division for their efforts over the past year, and secondly, I want to thank all of you for the support you give us to be able to do that job. So my appreciation is extended to both of those bodies at this time. Keep in mind my promise to the mayor, I'll be brief. Any questions you might have, I'll try to answer them, or I will get out of your way to move on to more important things, so.
Scott, I had a question, and I know you've had some folks retire this year or move on to other, are you guys fully staffed at this point in time?
We are. Just a matter of fact, we had a, the newest firefighter, his first day on the job was today, so he was just getting kind of acquainted. Our operations chief, Jim Dooley, is our training officer, and was kind of breaking him into all the basic fundamentals of Norfolk Fire, so it was his first day today. So all of those slots that have been, where folks have moved on or chosen a different career field have been filled, so as of today, we're 100% full.
Great, thank you.
Scott, I noticed a section in there where the, one of your boys went to the broad eating contest and won that. We thought we had a secret weapon going into that, and we failed, the city council did, so we are going to man up and be a little more prepared this year, so I just wanted you to know that.
Well, I'll pass that on to him, so he knows he's got to be on top of his game, so, yeah, it's a little fun part of the facts in there, so appreciate that. Any other comments or questions, or anything I can all do for you?
Failed.
Didn't quite fail, but didn't get over the hill there.
Scott, you put together a great report, as always, and I appreciate the fact that you're here before us tonight, and I think on behalf of this council and as well the entire citizens of Norfolk, you do a great job in your leadership abilities, so we thank you for that. I don't know sometimes if, as a community, I know it was one of the harder things for me to understand how we call upon you and your organization to be as well, take responsibility for the zoning, the planning, et cetera, that goes into this too. So if anybody, even within the audience, has any questions on that, I would, you've got him in front of you, and I see these two young boys back there thinking firefighters and planners and zoners as well, so again, I know the important piece that you and your group take in that part of it as well, so commend them as too for a job well done and serving this community, so unless anybody has anything different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. What I'd like to do then is take item 13, which was on that consent agenda, which was consideration of approval of a special designated liquor license for NWTF Northeast Nebraska Beards and Spurs Chapter to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits on February 1st, 2014, noting it says from 6:00 PM to 11:59 for their annual fundraising event. Through an email that came in to the city clerk, it has been requested that that be changed from 5:00 PM to 11:59 PM for the annual fundraising event. Since we do need to take action on this tonight, I guess I'm looking for a motion with amending, I guess, an amendment to that 6 o'clock hour making at 5:00 PM. We don't want him to not have.
I'll make that motion with the amendment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second, so with that, if you would please vote for the requested designated liquor license.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, thanks, Beth, I appreciate your handling that. Okay, next then is a public hearing that is before us tonight to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statute. I will open the public hearing and look to you, Randy.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a requirement of statutes for all cities that have an L B 840 economic development plan. They have to hold a hearing every six months and receive the report from the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. Members of the Citizens Advisory Review Committee are Bill Canham, Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangles, Aaron Otten, and Jan Heinspar. I also serve on that committee in my capacity as finance officer as an ex officio member. The CARC met on December 3rd, and they had six items on their agenda that they reviewed at their December 3rd meeting. First thing they reviewed was the current funding of the city's economic development program. There were no expenditures made from May through October 2013, which is the, from the last time they reviewed the Economic Development Fund financial statements, and as of October 31, the Economic Development Fund had $1,148,066 of cash. They also reviewed a revised CARC checklist. The CARC asked staff, when they first started, to put together a checklist that they could use and go through and go down that checklist when they review the city's economic development plan. The council changed the procedures where they did away with the formal guidelines and procedures that the old checklist followed, and so they asked staff to change that checklist they used to just follow the city's voter-approved economic development plan, and they looked at that checklist and thought that was a good thing, and they thought we should make that part of our actual CARC report that we give to the city council every six months. So when you look at the CARC report that's in your agenda packet, you'll notice something attached to it that used to not be there, which is the checklist that they used at their December 3rd meeting, and going forward, I anticipate that will be part of every CARC report. They also received an update on the Peterson Egg project. At the last CARC meeting, they reviewed Peterson's Eggs' application for funding, which the city council approved for up to $60,000 at the May 6 council meeting. As of now, Peterson Egg is tentatively selected as site, which is undergoing environmental review. The last meeting, the CARC also requested a city attorney's opinion regarding whether or not our voter-approved economic development plan allowed for industrial site planning. City attorney provided his opinion that it does, and they reviewed that opinion at the meeting. The Economic Development Director provided the CARC with an update on economic development activity. She noted we had lots of economic development activity the last six months with a significant prospect, and that we're been working also on finding a solution to the community's natural gas shortage, getting transportation of gas into the community. And finally, the CARC, based on the review and the checklist, found that the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and the voter-approved economic development plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions at all for Randy? Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wants to come forward and may have questions about what Randy has shared with us tonight. Seeing none? Then I will close the public hearing, and, uh, nothing, no action that we take on this, so appreciate it, Randy. Thank you very much. All right, under agenda items now is consideration of approval of City of Norfolk Event Guide to provide guidance for organizers planning to request the use of City of Norfolk facilities. Request a motion on this, please.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Diane, it looks like you're going to be giving us the scoop.
What this is, is a new, it's called an Event Guide, and as you know, we've had a lot of different activities that are sponsored in the city right now. There's lots of runs, there's bike rides, there's gun shows, all sorts of events, and they use, all of them have something in common, they use the city's facilities. And there's been maybe some people in the past who haven't quite understood the steps to take when you want to use a city facility, whether it be Memorial Field, or whether it be the Skyview Park, or any other of the city parks or city facilities. So we've developed an Event Guide, and it has three different parts to it. The first part is just the, the Section A are just a checklist to go through, step one, step two, step three, that makes it clear what you have to do in order to get approval to use one of the city's facilities. And we've worked, I've worked with a lot of city staff on this, who fielded a lot of questions from people, who say, "What do I do?", or they maybe miss a step and they didn't, they didn't realize, and so we need to do something that puts it out very clearly what needs to be done. If you notice, we have a new thing too on step one, where we will have a fee if they don't, you know, people need to think ahead, and we want them to think ahead at least 60 days before the scheduled event, which is mostly done, so that shouldn't be any problem with that. The Section B then is the application, and all that is, is just, we need to know, when do you want, what times of the day do you want this event to start, when do you think it'll end, what alcoholic beverages we serve, I mean, all these things the city needs to know. So this makes it a really easy place for them to enter all this information in, and they'll give it to the city clerk then, and then after she goes through it, she puts it on the city agenda. If it's approved and everything looks good according to staff, it will then be put on the city agenda for, if approved. The last section is, Section C, is insurance requirements, and that'll be really great information for people because one of the most important things about holding an event for anyone, you have to watch out for liability issues, and so in order to protect the organizations who are holding these events and also the city of Norfolk, they, we require that they have certain levels of insurance. So this is also going to be great information for them to know that according to their level, according to their activity and what level of risk there is of injuries, of course, they can look at this and decide what they'll need for insurance. So we're excited to get this out to people, where we encourage, you know, it's great to have the activity, the exercise, the economic development that comes when people bring these activities to, the events to Norfolk, so our part is just to make it as easy as possible for people to get approval to use the city, the facilities as we can. So, any questions about this?
Diane, I don't have any questions necessarily, but I will, I will tell you that reading through this, it's concise and comprehensive, and I think it's really going to help those folks that are, that are out there trying to, trying to bring business to us. And make it easy for the folks who want to put these events on. It certainly says that, that the, hey, we're open for business, you know, that sign's hanging out there, so hopefully this will just make that whole thing a little easier and give us something maybe to look at next year if we need to tweak it a little bit too, to make it even, even more powerful. Thank you for doing that.
Diane, I think it is very good, and I think what it'll do is it'll give people now a chance to know what they have to do rather than bother or ask the city staff continuously, where am I going, where am I going? Now they have a guideline in front of them, so I think it'll streamline it, and like Rob just said, we may have to tweak it a little, but it's a, it's a great start, and I think it'll hit, help city staff a lot. Thank you.
I would just add, my thanks. I know that a lot of work went into this, so thank you and rest of the city staff involved, as well as the Visitors Bureau for cooperating and putting this together, it's a simple, user-friendly guide that I think meets the needs generally involved, so thanks, Ken.
I've got just one quick question. On the general liability insurance section of this, was that kind of just recommended coverages that are kind of standard, or how?
This, I'm going to refer to Clint here on this. These are required, you know, according to your, like, if you're confused on whether, you know, what, what level that your event falls under, you know, I would say, I would recommend that you, you know, they would talk to Clint. This gives a really good idea for them, but in all cases, on a lot of these issues, they'll have to, might have to ask city staff. Think you may want to add to that?
Well, I think that from the staff perspective, what's listed here is the insurance that in the, in the amounts that need to be had for the, for the staff to go ahead, process the thing and move it forward. That is sort of explaining what the parameters are for the staff. I think that hopefully there will be coming forward for your consideration as well as part of a risk management plan, some further discussion about, about some of those things. The council, I think, had done one of those about 10 years ago, which this would complement this a little bit, but this is not what the staff, I don't think, is going to do the best.
But Clint, just for clarification, the definition of the event could be right on the fence, and they, and staff would determine what, what area it fell in?
Well, I think, I think you're correct in that regard. I mean, there's, it's kind of like the zoning context, what the zoning people do, just even though we've got that matrix and the zoning code, it doesn't address everything, and sometimes there may be some, there may be some discussion that certainly goes into determining where a particular event falls in that category.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have one. Diane, will this be available on the city website?
Yes, and we'll have it at the city offices, and we'll have it at the library, and I talked to Kim Kropnasek, and they'll also have these packets at the Visitors Bureau.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll have them readily available.
Thank you.
Was, along that same line, was Kim looking at maybe putting it on their site, or at least?
Yeah, I talked to her this morning, and they're going to put it on their site, too.
Thank you.
Okay, good work, a lot of work. Nice job. Thank you. So with that, if further discussion, I would ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, next is consideration of resolution number 2013-49, approving the final plat of Mark's Landing and its accompanying subdivision agreement.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution 2013-49.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to adopt. Discussion here. Trent?
Yes, Mayor and council. This is, this was brought back quite a while ago. This was rezoned to RR. There's a, there's one house clear up on the north end of 43rd Street, which he had rezoned this RR, and he replatted it, what you're seeing before you tonight is like a five, I think it's a five and a half acre parcel, and he did this for, he's incorporated, and he did it for his incorporation, so we got, we have other RR around the area, we have suburban residential, some SR in that area, and it fit well for what he already had there, so nothing new there. We did do a small extension of 43rd Street for future use if need be. There's just a small, I think it's 100 and some feet there on 43rd that's extended out for future use, so.
Right. Trent, while you're advising us of what's going on there, while we're going to vote on each one of the resolutions separate, do you want to go ahead about, within, talk a little bit about the sidewalk waiver that we're going to be looking at considering?
Yes, Mayor. This, he requested a sidewalk waiver and also paving requirements, and that waiver was a five-year waiver, because we don't really know how fast that'll develop, so in the future, if need be, sidewalks can be ordered in. It is a five-year waiver. Five years from now, I would imagine a lot of that area will probably be looking the same as it is now, but, so that's he, that's why he requested that, so.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions about what is being requested here? None? Okay, hearing none then, I would ask you to vote on resolution number 2013-49, approving the final plat.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-49 is adopted.
All right, and next, I would ask for consideration of resolution 2013-50, approving the sidewalk waiver for this same Mark's Landing.
Your Honor, I'll introduce 2013-50 resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item at all? If not, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-50 is adopted.
And finally, consideration of resolution 2013-51, modifying the paving requirements in Mark's Landing. If I could have a motion to adopt?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution 2013-51.
Second.
Motion with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-51 is adopted.
Okay. And next, we're looking for consideration of approval for the mayor to convey by letter to the Rural Water System Advisory Committee, the City of Norfolk Support, to partner with the lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District to serve portions of the improvement project area immediately south of the Elkhorn River.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. We'll have some discussion on this. Shane, are you going to start that?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
Request was made, as, as the council knows, and the community knows, and the area community knows, the NRD's really been taking the lead on exploring the possibility of providing a rural water system south of Norfolk, incredibly south of Norfolk in fact, to include the city of Madison and possibly even communities south of there. They've been working on this for some time. We first became aware of it in all springish timeframe, and from the start, when Stan, the director, came in and seen, seen me, I said, "I'm sure that Mayor and council will be very interested in partnering with the NRD to explore that." You know, there's possibilities of USDA loans being available to this project, maybe even some grants being available, so it only makes sense for us as a community to partner when these type of, these types of opportunities come around, just to look at the development of our community and how it affects us and our ability to grow south, or north, or east, or west. In this particular case, the area is obviously south of the river, so as the council knows and the community knows, we're running sewer currently. We're looking hard at running sewer south of the river, and we're under the design phase of that project right now, and oftentimes, as it has, as you have it, when you do a major infrastructure project like that, sewer and water either are a lot of times in conjunction or closely behind each other, so this general area looks good for us as far as some future development for the community. Again, we've just been trying to partner with the NRD along with the other communities that are in the study to see what makes sense as, as an area, so. The board wanted to know exactly from the mayor and council, as this letter indicates, what your intent is, if perhaps the rural water system would happen to not go forward, does the city of Norfolk still show interest in providing water out to that area south of town? And as the, as the letter indicates, we absolutely do. That's what the subcommittee is recommending to the full council anyway, I shouldn't say we absolutely do. The subcommittee would recommend that to the full council, as you've seen the staff work, so. That letter that the mayor put together there, I think, indicates that, and that's what, in response to, to the NRD's request, that we put that in writing, which is normal part of their planning process. part of their planning process, so they can make decisions, you know, they're getting close to their time where they have to make decisions on this project. So this is just another one, a piece of correspondence that would help support their decision-making process. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have in reference to the rural water system and Norfolk's part in that.
Any questions by this council at all? Okay, while we're sitting here and I'm looking out, is there discussion that you would like to, Stan, you want to come forward and, and address this, council? I think you know the routine, if you will state your name for us and sign in.
I need to sign in?
If you would, please.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, and Mayor and members of the city council. I am here tonight representing as general manager of the Lower Elkhorn District, a project that we've been working on for some time, as we mentioned, as was mentioned by Shane, and he gave a good, quick summary of this. We do have here this evening the Chair of our Advisory Committee, Bonnie Smith, and we also have Paul Medelman, who's also a member of our 12-member Advisory Committee, is also with us tonight, and also our Assistant General Manager, Ken Burney. And we also have Mr. Byron Brogan from the City of Madison visiting with us tonight, too. If I could just take a minute and talk about, and I appreciate the letter that was sent to us, we did receive that, thank you, take a couple minutes and talk about the brief history, briefly about the history of this project and why we're working on it. I did hand out to you ahead of time a map, and I hope you got to see that for a minute or two. This is actually what was driving things out south, and probably because of the drought last year, 2012, this district, this northeast part of the state, had more complaints of domestic wells and the irrigation wells that are out there of any part of the state of Nebraska by far. If you see those stars, there's a well of 170 some of those, and when that's not all of them, there's probably well over 200 that were, that we had problems with. And just briefly, those that are south of the river, south of Norfolk, have a double problem. They have well, some of them have domestic well issues. Wells are actually, one reason or another, they're bad or something, but they're also water quality is, is bad out south of the river and has been for a long, long time. And so I am, I am really pleased that we're looking at this and considering some options and some ideas for this. I did bring a board tonight over there, and you can see that, and that's just part of our district, of course, that's showing up there, and you can see the yellow line around the area. That's what we call an IPA, an improvement project area. By law, we have to define the boundaries of this by public hearing. We've already done that. We can move that boundary with another public hearing, it's not a complicated process, but you do have to go through the legal hoops. The red dots that show up from there, from here, you can probably barely see those, but those are the interference problems that we have. So that's kind of the, the nest of problems that matches up with the stars that are on match or map here that I handed out to you. And also on there, you can't see it from here, are black dots. That represents 220 signups that we've had already for this project, including the cities of Humphrey and Clarkson, who've had some severe water quality issues. It's the district's job, it's our statute and responsibility to provide water to people outside the city limits of a, of a city, whether it be a very small community or a large city like Norfolk. We can work within the zoning jurisdiction, within any, any boundaries we like, but we have to have agreements with the community, obviously, to do that, interloped agreements. So some of this activity is well within your two-mile zoning radius. As you can see, we're coming right up to the edge of the Elkhorn River. I personally talked to most of the businesses out there and asked them about the opportunity to hook onto rural water. Several of them indicated interest in that, including Paul. And we're excited about that. We think there's great opportunity there to develop a rural water system. We, as I said, 220 of these already. I'm confident there'll be more of those. Around Andy's Lake, around Cedar Lake, we have a few, and as you can see on your map, it just kind of follows, and you can see on this chart, excuse me, on this thing, it's follows that corridor, curd down beyond Humphrey. And the City of Clarkson also has some severe problems, so we want to try to serve those folks, but it may be in phases if we go about this. We do have a plan in place. I didn't bring copies, but I think your staff, Shane has seen this, this is the preliminary 61-page report that was completed by JEO engineers. We think it's a very thorough plan at this point in time. It's not final by any means, but it's a very good thorough plan. And so that's our next thing to discuss. In fact, we have an advisory committee meeting tomorrow night, based somewhat upon your decision tonight with us, we're going to move ahead with this. We're not going to spend years playing with this, designing it, messing around. We want to move ahead with it. And I would like to get this thing started, even this year, possibly even into next year, if not with funding available through USDA Real Development. We've been working with the Director of that, Roger Meeks, he's very interested in helping us, and possibly working with the City of Norfolk on some sort of a joint partnership. I'm not sure exactly how we're going to make this work, but we have some ideas. Our source of water right now appears to be the City of Madison. They're very interested in, in selling this, generating some revenue, helping us out with this, and also you guys, as the City of Norfolk, could provide water to us, too, as a, either a supplemental backup or, or part of the system. I think the main question that we have here is, are you interested in participating? Your letter indicates, I believe you are. Are you interested in participating in that corridor that's out there? And if you look at the dots, there are 57 of those customers that are in your zoning jurisdiction. And that's really something that you need to decide, is that your call, it is your call and not the district's call, but we have to move ahead with this. Bonnie is here, I think she'd like to make a couple of comments. It's this kind of thing that's driving this project. It's a needed project, it's been well received so far, we've had great tenants that are meeting and so forth, and that's really quickly, briefly, what it's about. Do you have any questions? I'd be more happy to answer those.
Stan, you mentioned you had 220 signups. What, what percentage of that is of the total? Do you know?
What percentage of what?
What, what percentage is that, 220 of the total people that could sign up for it?
Oh, they're probably, I think we had identified, count around, probably, I'm not sure, I hesitate to say, but it probably would be, you know, in the 900 to 1,000, 1,100 ballpark in that, all of them.
Good, good start.
Yeah, it's getting started on it. These, these projects, this is the third one that we've been involved in. It's interesting, but everybody waits for their neighbor to do something, and then once they sign up, well, that isn't too bad. Problem with that is you pay a signup fee, and you have to pay a pretty good fee to hook onto this thing. And then they decide a little later that they want to hook up, and the fees go up, of course, that's the way it is, so it costs you more later to join, get on. We'd like to get as many people as we could initially in the plan. That's what we tried to do with this, to get it up and running, so we see what we have. We have a viable project here, there's no doubt about it. Very viable project, for starters, so.
Thank you.
Good question.
Stan, you briefly talked about a timeframe. I know there's a lot of things that go, that are going to be involved with that.
Right.
But if, say, things kind of work out right and everything lines up, what, what is your projection?
Okay, let me tell you a little bit about the next step with this. If the, depending on what the advisory committee does tomorrow night, we want to advance this. They will approve this plan, I hope, some, some aspect of it, anyway. They'll advance it to the NRD board next week, or, excuse me, this, this week. Board will say this is a good plan, you need to move ahead with this. We then give it to Roger Meeks with USDA Real Development, and they do a full-blown economic analysis of all this, and they go through it very thoroughly. They recommend it to a state committee for potential funding. It's called the WEWAC committee, We's Water, something Board that looks at this. And then that's going to be in the three-to-four month timeframe for Roger and his USDA folks to look at all of that. So that'll be, you know, spring, early summer, and then we start looking at financing, where can we find funds to do this? It is a multimillion-dollar project. It's a very large project, and it will probably have to be done in phases because of that. And so we just need to decide here, well, I want to get started on it, and so does advisory committee, so does our board. You know, we've been pressured by a lot of people to get something done here, and you can see by the planes and stuff that we've had that are, that are driving this a little bit. We, we can't wait around for another drought, for another crisis to come along, we need to move ahead with it, so that's why I'm pushing it very hard at this point in time. That's a real quick overview of the timeline for it. If all would go well, possibly it could be approved this year for some type of funding, we could at least get started on it, possibly into next year in 15 is what I would guess, if all went well. And the Department of Health has to review all of this, too. It just takes time to get through it as well.
Stan, I, I, maybe I'm missing something here, but you know, as I'm reading this, what, what we're looking at as the council tonight is approval of the mayor to convey by letter, what you've seen in the letter. And I would assume that what you would anticipate that we would do would be to give approval for that letter, right? Is, is, what am I missing?
I, I, it's an excellent letter, but I'd like to see you go beyond this and make, and decide how you're going to work with this in that zoning jurisdiction out there with those 57 customers.
Okay.
If you don't really identify that in this letter. You say partnership, cooperation, committed to working with us, building, so forth and so on, which is very good.
Right.
And you probably didn't know the details of that until I told you tonight, what's really going on, but that's where it's at.
Okay. You know, go ahead.
Question then, Stan, is what's in this letter, does it allow you to move forward with what you need to do to take it to your board? I mean, that...
Yes, it does, but again, the question's going to be, what about the City of Norfolk? What about their zoning area? How do we work with these folks? And it's, I don't know exactly.
Okay.
We don't have all of those answers, certainly tonight, and that's why I would just, I would like to see you strengthen this letter, put something in there about if you want to work with us within that zoning jurisdiction out there a little bit. I, I don't know quite how to say it other than that, I guess.
Well, and I think that's a fair question. However, Stan, I would like to tell you that I think from a subcommittee meeting that was had, we certainly were committed to being with you on seeing this forward, but I don't know that we're into the guts of it as much as you are, that maybe that discussion needs to take place before we, I don't, I don't feel that we're ready tonight to tell you exactly what it is, and help me out here, guys.
Yeah, I, I was on the subcommittee for, for this, and I guess what you're looking for is more detail, and, and I don't think, I don't think that we're going to be able to accomplish that here tonight for your meeting tomorrow, right?
I, I think that's fair enough. I think we can move ahead with this.
Right.
We have some, the letters is a good commitment from you. I'd like to say that if I could have an unwritten kind of a wink, you know, that you're going to go ahead and at least work with us on this and find out more details with our engineering folks and decide here what the next step would be, because it is important. It could end up that you, the City of Norfolk, we could request asking water from you folks, and that's another level, so.
Say that again, it could be that...
I say we could, the project could end up asking to, requesting water from the City of Norfolk to help us with this.
And I know the sentiment from the subcommittee has been in full support.
Yes.
And, and I think that was another gesture of that, was our $5,000 that we, that we paid for the study, and that, that was right up front at the beginning, so.
Absolutely.
So I don't think...
Appreciate Dennis Watts sitting on the committee, he's been very good with this.
So I don't think that there's any, any doubt that we're in support of this project.
Stan, I was on that subcommittee as well, and, and yeah, the, the support, I think, is there, the door is open, but it, details are probably needed for anything to, to go forward, but I'm, I'll just echo what Dale said, it's a supportive body.
I understand, and I, and we'll try to make that happen.
Just for, just for an example, Stan, if the city is a partner in supplying water in this, that's the first time I've heard anything up to this point that we were. I was under the understanding that Madison was going to be primary, so that changes all the dynamics of everything if the city's supplying water to the rural water district. That's the first I've heard of it. I know there was one of the proposals out there to do that, but to my understanding, it was put on the shelf.
Well, that's, that's what we are considering, the potential of, of having enough water to do this. We think that Madison has that, but if they don't, we may need to come to you folks, say, look, we need a supplemental source here, but we're infringing in your zoning jurisdiction here with this. And there are 57, as I said, right now, customers, potential customers out there, how do we handle that, who does what here with this? So there, there are some interesting dynamics, and it takes, it took a little while for us to analyze all of this, to make sure that we had our numbers pretty good here. This, the 61 pages, it's a good report, it's a strong report, but it's not complete, that's for sure.
I guess, just so, maybe this will help, Stan, you know what, I think, what I heard elected officials say was the fact that we're, as a community, prepared, if they act on this letter, what the letter's trying to say, and maybe it isn't clear enough for you, but we can maybe make it clearer at some point in the future, but we're prepared to, if the, if the council approves the letter tonight, I think their, their intention is to move forward with moving water south of the river at some point, but obviously, that's, it's blended in with the rural water system and that build-out process, there's no need for us to do two processes separate of each other. We would want to work together and bring those, those systems together. But municipal water then would be south, would be available south of the river in that Highway 81 corridor, down to Sherwood Road, back up to First Street, that loop, that loop is important for fire protection needs. That loop can't even really be considered from an infrastructure dynamic for us until our 24, our 18-inch line is committed, and we're in the process of putting that in the ground right now, it's coming from the less water treatment plan. So as all those plans and procedures come together, you know infrastructure as well as anyone, they all take time, but it's first things first. So we're in the process of doing that, and then as the rural water system gets its feet, you know, and we start to see that that's going to happen, then we'll continue to, to work your hand in hand with the NRD to make that come together for, for our zoning jurisdiction as you, as you described there, especially that corridor south on 81 and east on First Street and Highway 81, and perhaps some of the airpark area. That's kind of the area for us where our pressure zones changes because of elevation, and that's an ideal place for, for the rural water system, at least in my simple mind, to take over and run from there, whether that water's coming from the City of Norfolk or the City of Madison or the City of Humphrey or wherever. I think all those factors are, are important to kind of digest. So, you know, I, I just, I hope that we've communicated clearly enough, or I have over the process, Stan, of making sure that we were there from, from day one, saying, we're interested in seeing what this, what the study has to show. Obviously, we showed that by the $5,000, and, you know, that was our commitment to each other in my office that day, and, and I meant that, and obviously, the mayor and council have approved that as well. So, golly, I, I guess I don't know how much more clarity we can provide at this point to the, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what's going by more clarity.
Well, I guess, we just want to make sure, the advisory committee needs to be sure that the, that the City of Norfolk is totally on board with this, and I think this letter does that.
Okay, great. They are, I, I think it does as well.
And I, we all know there's got to be more work done on this study.
Sure.
I mean, there's got to be more details that we have to go through, and we'll do that as we go down the road, and that's what we're asking. And you're offering that, your partnership to work with us on this.
And we offered that from, from day one, Stan, and we, with your consultant, we've met with them several times over the last...
Appreciate that very much.
...few months, and, and we've been pretty point-blank and forward with them, saying we're, we definitely want to be at the table and try and understand what this can do for not only our community, but all the folks that you described.
Appreciate your, your summarizing that and comments, too, and I just want to make sure the city council knows where we are on this.
Well, and Stan, good point, and I think the necessary thing here, though, is maybe the subcommittee maybe should sit down and be able to ask some questions of you as well.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't know how the subcommittee feels about that, but it just seems to me like, I mean, certainly, you know, we as elected officials certainly count on our staff to make sure that, that we have the, the full vision, but I think sometimes we need to ask some of the questions when you're having some of that discussion. So, and Bonnie, you referenced, maybe she would like to come forward.
Yes, thank you very much for your time tonight, appreciate it very much, and I really truly believe the door is open for us, and I appreciate that.
Stan, one question for you. That map in the study, is that available for review on your website?
Yes.
Okay, great.
If we don't have it on there, all of it will get it on there. We're working on some of these things, too.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We want to make sure that, once our folks get this finalized, and that will be advisory committee tomorrow night and our board Thursday night, basically approving this plan to move ahead, is what they're doing.
Okay.
Doesn't say it's a done deal. We don't know financially, economically, if this is going to hold up out there. USDA has to evaluate all this stuff, and they will very, very thoroughly, and they really have the checkbook on this, and it's very important, and we work closely with USDA. They're an excellent federal agency. I don't always say that about my federal agency. USDA Real Development is outstanding.
Well, Stan, I'll, I'll just reiterate what, what the mayor said. I think the subcommittee just needs to be able to ask some questions because, primarily because the letter, if the motion passes, the letter does say very, very...
I think Bonnie has a couple of comments and I don't know if I can, or anybody else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Good evening, Bonnie. We'll let you state your name for us and again, sign in if you would please.
I'm Bonnie Smith and I am the chairperson for the Rural Water Systems. And I'm just going to make a few quick comments because you're probably a partisan there. I wanted you to understand the importance of what we're trying to achieve here. I live four miles west of the airport, so I am in one of the areas that are real restricted by our water. We've had problems for years, but it really came forward in 2012. Our water is very restricted in our area. We have had problems with some people drilling six wells and still not finding water. And ourself at home, if I'm running the washing machine, I have almost no water to draw out of the faucet. So that's how restricted it is in our area. And beside that is very, very poor quality water. We have a water treatment system, but it's still, we struggle keeping it up to date and going, and we still have very poor water. I mean, it turns everything yellow, even with the treatment system. And so I guess I want you to understand what even the 57 or whatever number that people is that you cover as well of our area, the need to proceed forward in a timely manner because it is frustrating when you face that every single day. And so I want you to understand the importance of time because these people do get tired of fighting it. But you love your home and where you're living and you love your community. So it's just, you're in an area that unfortunately is restricted by water. So that is the point that I wanted to get across to everybody, most important to me.
Well, and I think it was a point well made. Any questions at all for Bonnie? Anything else you want to add to that? How did you get the honor of being the chair of this?
Well, I started when we first started and it came forward. We went to the meetings and we got started and I got involved and then...
So you have been involved a while too in this?
Yes, from the beginning. And then when they asked for people to volunteer, I had volunteered to be on their chair or on their advisory board and then just went from there.
Very good. All right. Well, thanks for coming forward.
You bet. Thank you.
You bet. Paul, come forward.
Yeah, I'm on the advisory committee. The 57 dots, black dots?
Yes.
Tomorrow, there's two choices we have to make. I think one of them is to leave those 57 dots in the rural water system or to eliminate them and take them out of the water system. And those 57 people paid their, not 5,000, but they paid their $200 too to be part of this. And so this board is being asked to make a decision of the, that encompasses, what's going to encompass the rural water system. And so if we vote them out, I had asked Dennis at the previous meeting that we would like as the committee to have a firm commitment from the city of Norfolk that if we vote those people out of the rural water system, that we have a firm commitment from the city of Norfolk to supply them with water. Not necessarily in conjunction with, but to bring them water. So, like I said, tomorrow we're going to make a decision, I think, to vote yes or no, keep them in, keep them out. So that's what's...
And you're looking at us to give you a yea or nay tonight? Is that a true statement? Because I don't think we're here to be able to do...
I don't know, whatever you, I know the letter, it's, yeah, it's a nice letter. I think there's some, it could be a little stronger possibly.
Okay. If, if in fact, your vote tomorrow night is to remove them from, would your question be, city, are you still here to be the guys that are going to provide going south? Is that, is that what you're asking? Is that a true statement?
I think, yeah, but realize too that if you take 57 people out of the 200, that's you're taking 25% of our revenue.
Right.
Plus more like 40% of the use of water is what I think. And I'm not correcting you if I'm wrong, but you're also pulling 40% of our revenue out of the system by taking it and putting it in the Norfolk system. So...
Okay.
If there's a, if there's a way we can work together and leave the stuff south of Norfolk in the rural water system for a time being, build the system to city specs, but it still be a rural water system, I don't know what the best answer is. And that's not going to get answered tonight, I know.
Right, right. And, and I think that's the thing, Paul. What I, what I would like to say is you're bringing up forward some thoughts and ideas that the subcommittee should actually be looking at and questioning with city staff as well. Does it, I mean, I know you're not getting what you want maybe tonight because...
No, well, we are, but we're not, yeah.
You are, but you're not.
Well, it's kind of like your letter. It's an agreement to agree. It's, it's a commitment to commit.
Yep, that's exactly what it is. You're, you're absolutely right on.
Also commitments require timelines and...
I understand that and, yep, and...
There's more to it, I think, than you're going to get tonight.
Yes. We're with you. I mean, we, we want to sit down and have the conversation and if you can come up with some ways for us to work...
Well, my fear is that, that there's, I think there's some code, or there's some outs in your letter possibly that you could use. But if we vote these people out and the system fails, the rural water system fails because we lost those revenue and the users, and that's the reason it failed, now the city's sitting here saying, well, we don't have the economic capacity to do it now. So now not only have we lost the city of Norfolk's municipal for your commitment, but we've lost the rural water system too. And it all fails. Potentially, that's a, I guess...
Yeah. Yeah, the letter, you know, we were asked, we were asked that in particular in Ken's request to address the letter. And in the mayor's letter, I guess I'm not sure how she could be any clearer. It says, "In the event that the rural water system does not proceed," so it does not proceed, "the city of Norfolk will continue to be committed to building municipal water systems in the area south of Norfolk."
You know what, Paul? Sometimes when I try to...
I think you could ask if that's, would hold up in court or not.
Well...
There, there's some outs in it regardless. I don't want to get into this, the letter, but ins and outs of that. I don't think that's, this isn't the form for that.
Yeah, I would agree. You, you, you've been heard though and certainly, I, I get it. I understand what you...
That's my struggle tomorrow, to make a vote to eliminate or keep the people in.
Does, does this vote have to be done tomorrow night?
Well, I don't know. I think if we're going to try to keep on some sort of a timely basis with this, we need to try to move this ahead. As a big vote, as Paul says, and I, I don't know what the tri committee will do on, I could just follow them, I don't know what they're going to do here. I want to advance this to my board to just move the planning ahead with it. Now they will know where the position of the city of Norfolk is on, unless you made a strong commitment to us.
Yes.
Hopefully that's great and that's good enough for them. We can all march ahead on this thing. So, take care of everybody out there if we can.
Yeah.
That's our goal. I'll leave, I'll leave anybody out of this.
I understand that, Stan.
I don't have what else to say here. I said what I said up there, so.
Yeah.
Stan, and I think one of the things that, you know, and I served on the subcommittee in that, and I guess, you know, kind of off guard, totally out of the blue, had no idea where this 57 number comes from and whether it, and I know it's, it's dots on the map over there. And so I don't know, you know, if your vote is going to be specifically 57 gone or 57 in.
So in the area that we're, basically we'll draw a line in the sand, so to speak, that this will be supplied by city of Norfolk and this is the rural water system is south of here.
You know, because...
This will be city of Norfolk water.
I, I don't, don't know that the, that, that the intention is for the city of Norfolk to be going all the way over into the Battle Creek area necessarily. And that may be where some of those 57 dots are.
No, they're not.
So...
They're concentrated in, on that map. And if they're not, they don't go to Battle Creek and they don't go way east either. If you come up, I'm going to leave this map for you. At least take a few minutes to look at it, see where the scattering is of the dots. Bigger dot means that there's at least two or three hookups there. Smaller dot is one dot, so there's several out there in order to get our, our 200. I think there's two miles there, did you see it? The 57.
Okay.
And one dot represents the trailer port out there. So there's more than, there's more than one user on there, one dot. There's eight. Covidian's on there as a dot. There's, there are use and that's why I say it could be upwards of 40%. The use could be up to 40% because of the trailer port, covidian, et cetera, the type of user that dot represents.
Well, I think, like I say, Paul, I appreciate you being here and giving us your comments and thoughts on it. I would say the subcommittee is more than willing to sit down and the sooner the better, it sounds like. And, but I don't, I can't give you any type of recommendation on what you do tomorrow night. I wish the best.
Can I?
Please.
Can I ask one question? Stan, are there other alternatives being considered besides what's in this December 2nd?
Stan, will you come up too so we can get it? No, that way it's recorded. Thank you.
I'm sorry. In this again, please.
Are there other alternatives that are still being considered other than what are in this December 2nd report?
Right now, this is what we have before us this time to consider, the J O report.
Okay. If I'm analyzing this report correctly, there isn't an option anymore where the 57 dots are still in the rural water district.
Well, that...
And maybe I don't underst...
Before that shows them.
What?
Report before that passed.
That... 4A. Okay, all right.
But the intention is to get all of the options in the report, to have it as much, as final as we can for a preliminary report, include all these things, realizing that we're not done with the study yet totally. We still have to look at quite a bit of detail here. And with the engineers, we paid for a basic feasibility study. That's what we got. Probably went beyond that. You know, that's a pretty thorough report. And we realized the situation with the city of Norfolk. You know, you guys have a source of water here where that was considered early on. We are looking primarily at the city of Madison to see if there is water there right now. It appears there is to serve everybody. But until we have 100% study be in front of us and everybody knows what it is, that's, I can't come here and say that's a done deal in terms of the source of water.
And I appreciate that.
There's two things you need. You need a source of water and you need customers, you know, to make this work.
Yeah, it appears that there's, you know, there's, has been, has been said, there's a lot to work out on this, a lot of detail to work out. But what we're looking at tonight, what we're looking, what we're going to vote on right now, I think is a pretty clear commitment as been, as has been expressed by council